It's 4:03. John, would you like to do the pledge?
I will. Okay, place stand, place your flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Constitution of this country.
A nation indivisible, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're going to introduce the board members, and I'm going to call the district, and you can say whether you're here or not. Council District One, Brenda Laxton Powell, are you here? You are not. District Two, Terry Thomas, are you here?
Terry? Terry?
Terry, I'm following the roll.
I'm sorry. I can't hear very well.
I'm sorry. Terry Thomas is here. Bernicle, District Three?
Present.
Tracy Robinson, District Four, are you present?
I am present by phone, yes.
Thank you. James Moreau, he's not here. Anna, Dr. Kaverneck, is she here? I don't see her. Okay. Rosalie Richmond, District Seven?
I'm here, District Seven.
Janet Porter, District Eight?
Present.
Okay. District Nine is a vacancy currently. Lynn Miller, District Ten, I am here. And Joe Bogas?
There.
District Eleven. Thank you. Is there any public comment? There doesn't seem to be anyone here for public comment. Next, are there any changes to the minutes from November 10th, 2021? Does it have any additions in progress? Could I get someone to?
Don't move.
How about second that?
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you.
Tab is joining.
Oh, all right. We have a... Dr. Kaverneck is joining. Are you there, Tab?
She's not here.
Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. I just muted it so you wouldn't hear the chaos around me.
Okay. Tab is here from District Six. Thank you. First on the agenda is library director's report. Amanda, would you like to do that?
Sure. First of all, I'd like to update you on where we are with personnel. And so I just want to let you know that we are at 13, 1, 3 vacant positions. Three of those are in the process of being filled. So that leaves 10 really that we're still seeking. Of those 10, eight are posted, and we're in the interview process for. Two of those I have revised and am waiting for Human Resources to approve my revised job description. I also want to take the opportunity to update you on a few projects that we have going on. As I mentioned previously this year, we have been the recipient through a partnership with DEHEC of COVID-19 saliva take-home kits to distribute to any person that is willing to ask for one and provide some identification. To date, our libraries have distributed 229 kits in the community. So we're about halfway through the amount that we were given to distribute. And certainly, based on the increased amount of cases, we have seen an increase in demand for those test kits. And we're pleased to be able to offer those to the community. Upcoming, in February through April 15th, our libraries will be the host of free tax assistance by both VITA and AARP. So just wanted to make sure everybody is aware, for those watching in the evening or at other times, that our libraries will again offer this very popular community service. And then I also want to bring to your attention a few projects that I've not brought before you until now as they are now starting to be viable. And I would like to share with you where we are on them and then ask for your blessing to proceed. In your packet, I sent you a concept plan of a potential Bluffton Pocket Park. It is the desire of Low Country, or excuse me, Hilton Head Bluffton Chamber of Commerce Leadership Class of 2022. It is their desire to fundraise and help assist in upgrading the green space directly in front of the Bluffton Branch Library. And their purpose specifically is that it would be a draw for library guests and visitors. And the future of that space would be natural landscaping, no fences, nothing like that. And then also a place for outdoor storytimes or performances should the interest in that arise. And then also a dream of mine, which is to install a story walk. Story walks are popular across the nation. There are about 300 or more in existence. And what it is, it's a deconstructed picture book that is displayed throughout a walking trail. And so as people of all ages encounter that walking trail, they're actually reading two pages of the book along the path. And I have two opportunities to do a story walk. One is here in front of the Bluffton Branch Library in partnership with this leadership class. And the other is through the Friends of the Beaufort Library, who've identified a park in northern Beaufort County that they would like to install a story walk. So it is my... I'm asking for your blessing to pursue partnering with these projects.
Don't move. How about second that?
On favor?
Along with this, I was thinking that there's been so much criticism of police and military, et cetera. If that could be included sometime down the line as, you know, walking down a trail, if there was an incident and the policeman came to help them or firemen or whatever the case might be to counteract this problem of the CRT. And I've had some discussion with some teachers recently at a couple of different schools for teaching CRT. And it just enrages me, and I'd like to have an opportunity to fight back. And also, it's in the community. It might be beneficial to the kids.
Sure. So for a lot of questions we get about what would the story walk content be? It would follow our collection development policy. And the libraries partnership in these story walks is to provide the content. So we would be the librarians for purchasing and selecting the titles to be displayed in these picture books. And they would be on a rotated basis and likely tie in with the history and nature, local events. And so anything we can do to encourage the community and encourage being outdoors, being active and moving, and that's what we'll do. But it'll follow the selection criteria for those, whatever picture books are used, we'll follow our collection development policy.
Amanda, I think the whole thing's a great idea. I like that it follows our collection policy. That makes it neutral and appropriate for the community. I think it's a great idea, and I fully support it.
Amanda, on this conceptual drawing from the leadership program, I assume this is the library building at the bottom where it says Bluffton Library. Just wanted to be sure of the orientation.
That's great. So for this particular project at the Bluffton Library, it would go through the counties? So Ms. Howard, you'll hear about this again. The Friends have looked at several parks in the city of Beaufort, the town of Port Royal, and so it'll naturally go through the processes in those municipalities, and you'll hear about that again. But I just wanted, before we start really putting movement behind these two ideas, I wanted your favor and blessing that the library should be a partner in this.
Good question. So the story walk, you can change it out?
Mm-hmm. If you've been on the Spanish Moss Trail, you know how they have those stations throughout the way? But what we would be looking to purchase is a similar stand, but that has a weight to lock and change them out.
Do we need to vote on that, or?
I don't think you need to vote, except just by way of information that I'm asking that we be a partner, Tab. And then do you need an official vote to say that you endorse Beaufort County Library partnering with these potential projects?
I believe it would be a good thing to do, yes.
Okay.
All right, so moved.
Second, on favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. And opposed? All right, we have our votes.
Thank you for that. I have one more thing that I'd like to do before I wrap up my director's report, and that is to continue my tradition of introducing library staff to you. So I want to introduce you to Kathryn Kitty McKee. If you'll come stand by me, please. Kitty came to us most recently from Florida and Virginia and Greenville. And she has extensive library experience. You can't see because she's wearing a mask right now, but she has what I like to term an infectious smile. You cannot be around her and not smile. It's impossible. I've tried. Just kidding. But Kitty is the branch manager of the Bluffton Branch Library. And she started working with us September of 2020, right before we reopened to the public in October. And then we threw a renovation at her. And from March to just last week, she has been the person I've relied on in this building to keep staff upbeat, up to date, and informed about what's happening with the branch. She's my go-to here at this library, and we are pleased as punch to have her on staff. And I just want to introduce you to Kitty McKee.
Hello. Thank you for inviting me here. It's good to meet you all. Does anybody have any questions for me? I don't think so.
Kitty, tell us about your background.
Yeah, I've been a librarian for about 15 years. I started out at a little tiny library in Georgia. I was a bookmobile coordinator initially. And then I ran a branch in Little Town in Auburn, Georgia. And I received my degree from Valdosta State University in Library Science. And at that point, I went to Greenville, South Carolina. And I was a branch manager there at two different libraries. And then my husband was transferred to Virginia. So in Virginia, I was at Samuel's Public Library, and I was over Technical Services, which is cataloging and adult services. And I was there for about six and a half years. And we wanted to come back south. And that's how I ended up here. And it's been a lot of fun, so.
One interesting fact about Kitty is that she is a twin.
Yes, I am.
And as she was introduced before council earlier last year, late last year, it was announced that it is unclear as to if she is Kathryn or Marty or Martha, which twin she is, as there was a mix-up when they were babies. To bring that one more twist, we just welcomed Martha to the Lobico Library last fall. And so we are employing both twins.
So you have Kitty in the background? There you go. Thank you.
Very good.
Kitty, I think you're an inspiration for anyone who's watching because the message is wherever you go, you can get a job at your good library. So, you know, I think your description of where you've moved and what you've done is great for people who love to read and like to think about being a librarian as a career.
Well, thank you. I do love libraries. So I've been very, very happy in libraries, very, very happy here in Beaufort County. And I completely love this stuff. So if y'all need anything, just call her at me. I'll answer whatever questions you want. Okay? You're welcome.
Thank you.
And that concludes my director's report, unless you have any questions for me.
Questions? I would like to introduce Alice Howard, who is our liaison to the county. And Chuck Ackerson is now here as county administrator. So welcome. Next is our finance report. Joe Bogas?
Thank you. And we get to the exciting part of today, maybe. Actually, Tab, I want to cover three things. First off, promote to our usual financial documents. Secondly, why don't you present to everyone an update on our impact fee situation, where we are, what we have, and what we're looking at for the rest of the calendar year. And then lastly, kind of wrap up where we are with the Bluffton project, Bluffton Phase One project. And so to begin in our usual fashion, what I'd like to do is to start with their special funds page, which is in your handouts. And we'll start on the left-hand side, looking at our state aid lottery. And you'll see that so far, we received two installments of our state aid. Nothing has been received since our last report. We have spent an additional $28,000 out of our reserve, leaving us with a healthy balance of $142,000 sitting there on there for state aid. We will receive a third installment of state aid of about $109,000, and then a fourth installment later in the year of about $35,000. Overall, this would represent about $40,000 more in state aid in this fiscal year than in the last. So we thank South Carolina State Government for supporting us in this regard. Next, I'd like to move over to our impact fee side. And dropping down to the bottom, you'll see that we're sitting at $5.3 million in impact fee balance, down a bit, about $17,000 to $18,000 from our November report. We had received since our last report about $118,000. And as expected, 71% of that is from the Bluffton Library, followed by Hilton Head and St. Helena. There was a single expenditure made in this report, $4,000, and that's from the Bluffton account for renovation activities at that facility. Now, looking at the balance is fine, but yet we recognize that we still have what we call encumbered obligations, that is commitments to pay for Bluffton Phase One project of about $271,000. Also out there is our new Riverside land and design fees, about $1 million and a half. Possible Bluffton Phase Two architectural fees, architectural and design fees of about $45,000. And then also Hilton Head A&amp;E Architectural Engineering Study of another $50,000. And we're going to speak more about that as we get on. But I want to give you a holistic view here that while we're sitting on a good deal in terms of impact fees, we also have obligations out there and projects that are coming around the quarter that we simply have to be aware and be cognizant of. And I'm going to cover them as we get into our total impact fee protection in a few minutes.
Can I ask a question? I should know the answer to this, but it's really for Chuck Moore. So the city of Beaufort and Tampa Royal is still not paying the impact fees? I saw receipts of $5,078. There's still not?
We're still waiting for the newly proposed fees to sign our government agreements. And the only impact fee right now that we have adopted in the new schedule is the school impact. We're actively seeking out.
Pushing this part of that.
My understanding, no new legislation or regulation has been passed that has changed impact fee structure. We're still at the old five district budgetary alignment.
For right now, yes. The study has been done. The presentations have been made. The IGAs for the municipalities have been drafted. They just haven't been signed yet.
Right, yes, sir.
Okay.
And then lastly, on that page, we have our special trust. And there was a slight change, about $73,000 in interest income that's collected here, otherwise you don't material change regarding. So in terms of special funds, we're looking very good and very healthy. Now, let's turn over, if we would, to the budget expenditure page, which is also in your handouts here. Again, six months, 50% through the year. Here, to put this as a short order, 50% through the calendar, through the fiscal year, what about 44%, 45% spent. 45% spent in personnel services. And again, going back to what the director commented, we have 13 vacancies. So this is understandable. But we're going to be under there. And 40% spent on operating funds. This is again, I think, reflective of the COVID conditions, the reduced services and hours that we've had. But I think as we move forward and as we start resuming more normal operations, we'll see a more fulfillment of the spending as we move forward. So far this year, we have unspent funds of about $4 million. So in short, looking at these two pages, we have a good impact fee balance, good book reserve, material balance, and we are undispent. And then the third document that we'll go to in terms of our review here is materials expenditures, which is really my favorite here. For the six months, we have spent $219,000. But we do have invoices on hand, which will bring us back to a more normal spending pattern than what we have here. Now, looking at this thing holistically, we have $219,000 spent so far this year, six months in. We have remaining state aid balance of about $142,000. We're going to get our third and fourth installments in, which will represent about another $140,000. And we have an unspent materials balance, signed balance of about $285,000. So potentially, we have to spend just under $700,000. Realistically, we won't spend all of that. But the idea here is everyone understanding that while we're about $219,000 spent so far this year, there isn't much to go. And we'll see something quite a bit north of that as you're... as yours matures. The other thing I'd like to point out is that of the $219,000, about 99% has been spent strictly on Hoopla, with these books and hardback books bringing up the balance here. So we're looking at good material spend. But before we move on to the impact fee portion, I'd like to have the director speak to Hoopla Binge Pass, Curiosity Stream, and some other things that are coming down the pipe in terms of our materials offerings.
Sure. I feel like I spend a lot of my days bragging about Hoopla. And rather so, it is a product that we are proud to have, and we continue to make that available to Beaufort County Library cardholders. Just to refresh anybody who doesn't use Hoopla or isn't aware of what Hoopla offers, Hoopla is available on a website. It's available as an app. It is free with your library card number. And library cards are of course free. Hoopla provides download instantly, no wait. You can have it right away. Movies, TV, books, audiobooks, and even music and comic books, graphic novels. Now, in terms of December, right before the holiday, as a Christmas gift, so to speak, to Hoopla users, they announced a new borrow. It's called a binge pass. And it means exactly what you think. You get to binge all you want of two very specific categories. You can have a binge pass for magazines. So over the course of seven days, with only one Hoopla borrow, you can read or view, print, download as many magazines as you want. You can binge all the magazines you could absolutely want through Hoopla. Or you can select with one Hoopla borrow, access to, seven days of access to all of the great courses lecture series that they make available, such as dog training or British Isles. So you can, in the course of seven days, you can get your heart's content of all the great courses you want. I just received word today from Hoopla that they are adding a third binge pass. And that is called Curiosity Stream. And that is thousands of documentaries and nonfiction series on science, technology, history, and lifestyle, even children's content. So your borrow in Hoopla goes a lot further than it used to with those binge passes. Just to refresh everybody, Beaufort County Library budgets to provide eight borrows to every cardholder. And so for eight borrows, you can download what you would like to have. So we're very pleased with Hoopla and proud to announce this and hope it gets a lot of use.
Thank you. Let me add my own personal comments here in terms of the binge pass and the great courses. When I received a director's email about the binge pass, I looked at the great courses. And this is an offering of about 300 different lecture series. And I chose one and speaks to me anyway, of one that interested me, which is British Indian. So I have completed a 24-lecture series on British Indian. This is the same course that is taught by the instructor at the U.S. Naval Academy. I have learned more about British Indian than I ever thought possible. But at the same time, I feel that this is really the ultimate library offering in terms of expansion of knowledge, getting useful information, and making available to our county residents. This is fantastic. The courses are really well taught, well instructed, and they can come together with a downloadable instruction manual, which in this case was written by the instructor himself. So I feel this is a tremendous offering and something that should really be a great value to our community.
I have a question. This is Rosalie. Regarding novels and what's available with the latest novels, a friend moved here from Nevada. And she was complaining to me or mentioning to me that she cannot get the same selection through our Hoopla that she can get and continues to get from her library in Nevada. I don't know why. I didn't have any answers for her. But that was her comment regarding novels. So that's my question.
Sure. Due and noted. And whenever any of you encounter any comments, suggestions, feedback that like that, please send them to contact us directly, either in person at the branch or through email, as we're happy to explain the offerings and perhaps point them to the resources that they're looking for.
Okay. I will tell her to do that.
Amanda, just purposes of background. Hoopla, who owns it or what entity owns it? And how do they finance their operations?
Hoopla is owned by a vendor that we use for physical DVDs. It's owned by Midwest Tape. That's the corporate company that does that. They provide both print and digital now. Their digital arm is Hoopla. And it's a subscription service. So libraries that subscribe to it pay a fee. We pay for our download. That's why we're budgeted eight borrows for our library cardholder. And that is how they acquire content. And they go out to publishers and acquire the digital rights to make those items available.
All right, so our library has signed up, obviously. And we're paying them so many dollars a year. Is that right?
We're billed monthly for Hoopla.
Monthly, okay. All right, well, thank you for the background.
Any other questions for you?
All right. And I want to continue here and really wrap up with a review of our current impact fee standing. And this simple grid is included in your handout. She can file it where you want. What I wanted to do at this juncture is that since we're looking at the beginning of the year, since we're wrapping up Bluffton Phase One, and since we also have an active year in terms of physical activity within our libraries, I wanted to bring us all saying same thing as we're looking at our impact status together. And we all have the same point of statement as we are. But what I'd like to begin with is really our impact fee balance What I'd like to begin with is really our impact fee balance, as we had in last year and the beginning of this year, and you see that we're at five-point-three million, which is really the number that we referred to earlier in presentation here when we talked about impact fees. And what we're going to look at is really calendar year 2022, not fiscal year, the calendar year 2022. We began with a balance of about five-point-three million. And then moving down, Bluffton Phase One renovation budget was set at eight-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand. So far, we're going to pay out about four-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand, and we have a balance due encumbered obligations that is remaining to be paid, about two-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand. So when we sum all of this together, we'll see that we're looking at spending less than the budget of amount, and we're expecting to have an under-budget number of about eighty-two-thousand, which is really quite remarkable, and kudos to the library director and his staff for doing that. What I think is especially significant is that, you know, when we're looking at supply chain shortages and disruptions in delivery, there's so many things, that Bluffton was really brought in very, very close to the time, and really under budget, and that's a remarkable achievement there. So hats off to the director and his staff there. The next thing that we, that we have to consider is really Bluffton paint on renovation as a whole. So so far, we spent seven-hundred-and-sixty-one, but there was an earlier nineteen-thousand time on expenditure for the design phase of this, and that really was paid out in year two thousand and nineteen. So when we wrap all of that together, we're looking at a Phase One cost, a little over seven-hundred-and-eighty-thousand, which again, is remarkable considering that what we, what we were able to do with this facility in terms of spending that amount of money and extending to useful life and vitality of this, of this building, another decade or two months for the future. So again, I think from my perspective, I think the board here, this is really just money well spent. And that includes seven-hundred-and-eighty-thousand, includes the original design fee, architecture, engineering study, renovation itself, and then furniture fittings and equipment. So all that together is really money well spent, and the facility looks grand. Now, also, what we have on the drawing board for this year is the next phase of Hilton Head Library renovation, and that's the A and E study for that facility. In two thousand and nineteen, Bluffton and Hilton Head were still together. So that design is already set. What we have next to consider is really the A and E study. What is it going to cost us to take these things and move them into reality? And that's marked at fifty thousand. We also have Riverside Land and Design, and that we said before, we paid that at nine-and-a-half, and that's out there. But it is a possible A and E study for Bluffton Phase Two, and Bluffton Phase Two is primarily behind-the-counter, checkout counter, meeting rooms, more infrastructure, and then paid that forty-five, forty-five thousand there. We're continuing with the number that we used before back in, back in May when we did this, in terms of revenue, income, after impact fee revenue for the calendar year, about seven-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand. So when we pull all of that together, we're looking at ending this year at a little over four-point-two million, which is a very, really, very healthy number. Now, when we did this, when I did this back in May, we're looking at a May-one, July-one number of seven-point-three. So we gained a bit between July number, which was done back in May, and this number for the end of the year. And really, we can attribute that to lower-than-anticipated spending for Bluffton facility in a bit higher-than-anticipated revenue in terms of impact fee receipts. So in that regard, we're looking holistically very well. Now, going back to the fact that we still are operating within the five impact fee districts, most of the spending that we're looking at in this projection, about one-point-nine million, would come out of the Bluffton district, and we have a healthy balance there, so there's no restraints at all. When I look at the constraint, there could be something, there could be one in the Hilton Head district, because as you know, we have about seven-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand in impact fee number there. If you deduct from that fifty thousand for the A and E study, it's well over six-hundred-thousand. But again, depending on the scale and scope of the final cost there, the ultimate number could exceed what we have on hand, but that's something we have to consider. Renovation fees for Bluffton Phase Two or Hilton Head are not in this projection, because we're still at the budgetary phase there. But we are looking very, very healthy as we move into, as we look at the end of this year in terms of impact fees. But I want to leave everyone with that understanding, that I think we're, in terms of the budget numbers, you know, we're well-funded, we're dividend-free, we're underspent so far, and we're looking pretty good. So at this, are there any questions on the financial documents or the projection? There being none? Back to you.
Thank you very much. It's a great story. And good news. Thank you. As we continue, the committees, the foundation is meeting, they're meeting February sixteenth, February, on Wednesday, so we will have a report in March on what they are doing. Friends of the Library, Miranda, do you have a?
She's not open. I can do that. Um, Friends of the Beaufort Library, aside from trying to pursue that Storylock project, they are also just, just launched their annual book sandwiched in series that's taking place in person at USC Beaufort on Mondays, and then also available through a link on Zoom. So that, that series will run all the way through March the seventh, and so there's a full details on their website are available, so you can see all of the list of speakers and the books or music that those people might be presenting. Your library director is one of those. So I will be presenting in February. But also, the friends will meet tomorrow, tomorrow afternoon at four o'clock, and continue their great work in support of our libraries.
Okay, thank you very much. Bluffton, Rosalie, would you like to talk about Bluffton?
Yeah. Friends of the Library and Bluffton, all we had to say, I mean, we did a lot in the week. And what they said was that they were very excited about, you know, starting up again. They have a new membership, and they have a new meeting person, and they are just full ideas, and they want to use money to help in different ways with the needs of the library. They said their biggest expenditures are publications and subscriptions. They have a cookbook, or they have cookbook programs, and they will be starting soon. And they're thinking, and they need six times a year instead of four times a year. They're thinking of doing a membership through our website, like using PayPal. There will be a very big book sale in the spring, and they were very excited about Amanda's proposal about the book, the bookwalk, and doing something with that property in the head of the library and making a positive library park. So I think everything is very, very positive, just very, very up and excited for the coming year.
Okay. Anything else?
They did one of the things, they made a new flyer. Instead of it being locked in light, they did it all in color, so you really grabbed your attention, and they're trying to get many more new members that way.
Well, thank you so much. I think the renovation of the library, I mean, they gave them a little impetus to really go forward, and that's great news. And I did meet some of the, some of the board members, and they're, they're very excited, they're lovely people, so that's great. Thank you. Hilton Head has a new, they began to their board with new people too, and there's some marketing people, and their, their volunteers are looking towards improving their membership, getting more members, so their marketing piece is going to be really exciting too. So what they think is, we're getting so many new people from the north that are younger, and they have so many good skills that we can use them, or looking for something to do, so it seems to be a good time to recruit volunteers for that, so thank you. And next, we're going to talk about the policies and procedures. Rod, Rosalie, do you want to talk about the meeting room policy?
Yes. I'm made aware by Amanda that there needed to be certain rewording of our policy regarding the use of all these lovely rooms in the libraries. And as you can see in the Bluffton library, we have several additional rooms that people could use for different purposes. And because the policy that we had wasn't really clear, Amanda had brought forth two herself to our committee and to Cap, the chair, some new wording. And Amanda, would you please tell us about that?
Yes, I'd love to. So the meeting room policy is established, and is one, it has been extremely helpful in most situations, but it did not specifically address the usage of study rooms. So we have several small conference rooms, large conference rooms, and those are reserved in advance, and those are, according to the existing policy, those are made available to library cardholders. So you must be a library cardholder to reserve the room. But in a few of our branch libraries, there are individual, very small, one-to-two-person study rooms. And the, our staff was unclear in a situation about how to advise on the usage of a study room. And so I asked the policy and, and the policy review committee to review the policy and to consider adding the word, the sentence, "Study rooms are available for public use on a first-come, first-served basis." And that would provide an option for people regardless of their status of holding a library card or not, it would allow them an opportunity to utilize a space should they need it. We're often entertaining guests from out of town or out of county, and this would be an opportunity to have a smaller space made available on a first-come, first-served basis regardless of library card membership.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the revision? Okay. A second?
A second.
Seconded. All in favor of the motion, say yes.
Aye.
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 Okay, and opposed? Okay, thank you, the motion passes, thank you. That brings us to our strategic planning committee. Mrs. Porter, would you like to speak on the strategic planning?
Thank you, Lynn. This is Janet Porter, and I'm chairing the strategic planning committee. I, my position, we're all, all of us as directors have terms, and my term has ended, and I've decided not to repeat that, so this will actually be my last meeting, and I, my term is in February, and I just want to say how much I appreciate the opportunity to work with all of you to strengthen the Beaufort County Library. So Cap and Amanda and I have to work together to determine who will be chairing the strategic planning effort, and I will support an orientation of that person to what we've been thinking of, and that's probably needed to do that, but I will anticipate that Amanda's been there in every step of the way. So I don't have anything else to report. Also, even if I wasn't looking forward, we probably would have suspended things against Omicron anyway, because we had decided at the last meeting that we would hold focus or certainly couldn't be holding until we get through this Omicron wave. That concludes my report. That is it.
Okay, thank you. All right. And next we have.
Challenge.
This is a challenge, two rails. Joe, would you like to say something?
We remain on challenge. Do you take the corner of that and just play it?
And that's good news, because there are things out there that are, that are problems. Library facilities committee, Mr. Cole, would you like to?
Yes, just a couple of comments. Number one, we are holding this particular meeting in the newly renovated Bluffton Library. I invite all the members of the public to come in and take a look at this place. It has been redone to reflect changes in family makeup and demographics from when it was opened, I think it's twenty-one years now, and it's got much more space for children. And I think you'll really like it. If it's for kids, you can learn to lose them, I think they'll like it. So that's that. Now, in terms of the talk in the recent past about renovating the Hilton Head Library, that's still in the planning stage, but once again, that's kind of like a reverse of this branch planning. We have many less children in Hilton Head than we did twenty years ago, twenty-one. So they'll be holding more for adult facilities, and of course, not eliminating children. Just reconsideration. In addition, the big issue is, what did I do when I did the paper? Is the new Riverside library concept, it is still being negotiated between the county and the developers of the new Riverside project. So I can't say whether it'll ever come for sure. I don't want to mislead anybody, but the, the presentation a few minutes ago of the little park outside is a great idea, and we want to bring the public into nicely vegetated areas. So it's still ongoing. And Chuck, do you have any updates for us on the deals with the developer of New Riverside?
Sure. So we met right before the holidays, and when you get into executive session, we're going to discuss those negotiations and ancillary issues associated with them.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, any, any questions? All right, thank you. Is there any old business or new business? I want to say that our next meeting will be scheduled for March the ninth at four o'clock at St. Helen of Branch Library. And I also want to thank Dr. Porter for all of her work that she's done on this board. I think that it's been, been a great influence and a great, had, contributed great leadership to, to the committees that you've been in charge of, so thank you very much, and we're sorry that you're only returning.
Janet, if I see you around, I call you Janet.
You can call me anything. Call me anytime, anything.
Can you see me pointing? She's virtually on the television screen up there. I would like to make one comment. I'm not sure what Amanda's planning this, but we have the book sandwiched in agenda for this spring, and it's hosted by the Beaufort Friends of Library. And I just went to the first one with a presentation by Beaufort Mayor Stephen Murray on rebuilding American prosperity. It was great. And Amanda will be doing a book on February twenty-eighth of Dolly Parton, Songteller, My Life in Lyrics, and it's by Dolly Parton, of course. So I encourage all of you to take advantage of these book sandwiched in presentations. I've been a fan of these for twenty-five years, maybe. I made a presentation back in, I think it was two-oh-six, I stand to be correct, my memory is getting a little short. But anyway, please partake of book sandwiched in. It's only at Beaufort Library.
Thank you, Bernie. Pursuant to South Carolina Code Section thirty-dash-four-dash-seventy discussion and negotiations, we'll be discussing, we'll be going into executive session to discuss some things about the new River project. So can I have a motion to go into executive session?
So move it.
Second. All right. In favor?
Aye.
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 All right, okay, so.
We have to lend opportunity for them.
No, I understand that, but they'll still be on. No, I understand that, but they'll still be on, they'll still, okay, so we're on, there will be.
I'll get Josh B. Josh will be with you. I'll text you. Just crank the pipe.
Hey, that's, that was the granddaughter.
Joe.
Usually I don't stay for executive session, but because this may go up to the next level.
Okay, so we're back in session and out of executive session, and no vote was taken. So that should conclude our business, and could I have a motion to? What do I want to do? And the meeting.
That's all I need, Liz.
Terry, second.
I come here to like. So move.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Our next meeting will be March the 9th at St. Helena, to remind you. Thank you very much, all of you.